Just through the cap showing your calendar.
Okay, that's it. Oh, okay. We have workshop open. And we have a time certain for lunch at 12:00, so.
Good morning.
Morning.
I put on your desk the budget calendar.
Well, we're gonna do this in five minutes.
It's like two minutes.
Two minutes.
I'll set the timer. You can kick me out in three minutes.
We're not gonna upset the girl that's in charge of all the money.
So I put the budget calendar on your computers and I highlighted the dates that we submitted the forecast to the DLE last Thursday and then I'm reviewing with you today. And we'll start reviewing with the district administrators in February. So the highlighted dates are the dates that involve you, the board. So in February, at the workshop, we'll bring you, just we'll talk about a five-year work plan and where we are with that. And then probably mostly Mr. Bishop will do some updates on that. And then I just have the regular updates in here. April 28th, we'll do another five-year work plan workshop. And then June 23rd. And then we approve the tentative budget in July. There is no fifth Tuesday in July this year, so the approval of the tentative budget will be on the fourth Tuesday, July 28th. And then the final approval will be September 8th at the September Board meeting, so. Is everybody good with those dates? I mean, they're board meetings and you're usually here anyway, so. You know, so that's just, I'm just here today to bring this to you.
The only thing that I think we have to be realistic is, we may be in for a rough budget session with the legislature. Yeah, it, you know, I mean, there's, while there's some good things being discussed, the way to fund those things will directly impact our staffing plans and our, or could directly impact our staffing plans and programs.
Yes.
So I noticed you have staffing review in February to March. Is that something that could be fluid based on what happens with, with the legislature? Because we may not know closer to the end of session.
Those are Ms. Swain's initial, I think those are just the initial.
Those are her meetings.
Those are her initial meetings, yes.
That's not with us. That's where she's, that's when you guys go out with the schools.
Yes.
Okay.
If you look to the right, there's the responsibilities of who, you know, what those are, so.
I misunderstood. I was thinking that was early.
Yeah, that's.
It's not now.
Those initial, those meetings simply look at student numbers that we projected and staff and what's, and number of teachers that we're projecting that they would have. And then any new requests that they would make.
That's when they do that, I believe.
Okay.
And then the March 30th through April 2nd, that's when the executive team and myself sit down with the district administrators and go over their requests for the year, which at that point are simply requests until we have a final budget and then we, you know, move forward from that.
Thank you, that was what I was.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? All right.
So obviously, we don't have to change our meeting date in July because that is the fourth.
Correct.
Fourth Tuesday.
Correct, there are no, there's only four. We only like to do that when there is a fifth one. It gives us more time to have a more solid budget closer to when our final budget ends up being. You know, so. There's only four Tuesdays, so we can't go on the fifth Tuesday. All right, have a good day.
Aye, thank you. All right, Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
2.29 and 3.403.
Yes, good morning, board members. One of these items we workshopped in October, October 22nd, the Guardian program, was decided to bring that back with the police department to have these two come to you at the same time with no other policies. So I'll go through the changes that were made in the second one when we come to it as a result of that other workshop. But 2.29 is the Citrus County School Board Police Department. This is a new policy to establish the police department designate the agency head and outline his responsibilities, including the development and implementation of the Citrus County School Board Police Department Procedures Manual. The policy provides requirements for eligibility for service and authority of the Citrus County Schools' police officers and outlines the general responsibilities for police services. This new policy was presented to the Policy Informants Committee in October and previously sent to Mr. Bradshaw for his input and some revisions. This policy is based on the Orange County Police Department policy with some minor modifications. And somehow we inadvertently left off the numbers, and we will insert those for the public hearing, the running numeral numbers for each of the major headings there, so open it up for discussion. Mr. Bradshaw, do you have anything?
We'll put, we'll put the numbers in prior to the, the meeting where you'll approve it.
Right.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes, so I had some questions. I know that this is kind of a broad brush approach to the formation of the policies or the written directive system of the police department. And with that, I just had some questions about the framework and some of the wording because the agency head, we've used the term agency head and yet we have a police chief.
Correct.
So was the agency head wording timely used because of statute? Or why are we using, why are we not using district police chief? The agency head is the police chief, or is the agency head superintendent? I mean, I would say the agency head.
It's not the superintendent, the superintendent says, doesn't make. Doesn't make the agency head. The agency head, in reality, is going to be the police chief.
But, but we didn't want to say that? Is there any reason why we don't want to say?
The only thing I would say is just if at some point in time, the district decided to take a step back, if you remember technically, when the formation of the police department started, Sherry was designated as the agency head, but she was not a police chief. And by statute, you can do that. So that would prevent coming back and having to redo that if you were to take a step back from that stance and put a civilian agency head over that fight was done when Sherry was head.
So the procedures that are, that we're talking about, the agency head gets to develop the framework and set the standards, but I was just a little confused on, you know, we have policy and we have procedures, so.
I don't think, from my research anyway, I don't think that the school board can delegate the authority to create policy, but it can delegate the authority to create police procedures.
Are the police procedures written directives? Are they policies of the police department?
Yeah, it's gonna be like, it'd be like the sheriff. He's, he signs and, you know, whatever the written directives that they're doing. Part of them will be confidential because of safety and security.
Right, but I guess, yeah, what I'm trying to figure out is, a police chief is different from a sheriff, though, and sheriff can literally write anything into their.
Correct, but as an agency head, they don't do that.
As the sheriff being the agency head, or as a?
Well, the sheriff is the, is the head of the sheriff department.
Right.
But there are also, ah, let's see, I mean, there are agency heads of other administrative bodies and then they can create policies.
Well, I think the department heads of the school board, they can't create policies. The school board has to create policies, right? Isn't the agency head of the school?
Correct, but the, but the police department is a separate agency.
Correct.
Your department heads are under the, your department heads, at the end of the day, are still employees of the school board. And I know that the police chief is an employee of the school board, but it's kind of, you know, when you create a police department, it's kind of separated. Does that make sense? It's, it's different.
Right, it does, and, but that's why I wanted to make sure we're clear because the policy of the school district is set by the, the school board.
Correct.
So if the school board, which we founded a school board police department, the written directives, I mean, it's not just gonna be procedures, right? A police department has to have written directives and policies, right? But we don't, we only talked about procedures. So won't this framework, Buddy, be a written directive system that will really be policies? But I guess what we're saying are there the policies of the?
Yeah, I think it will. I mean, you know, when you talk to, I've talked to Sarasota and Palm Beach and I know Chuck pulled this from Orange County, from the other school board police departments, and of course, we know from history of the City of Empana and the City of Crest River and how those police departments ran underneath their city manager and their city councils. The police chiefs typically have the authority to write procedures or policies for their agency. Aside from the governing body that is, you know, just like the city councils or the school boards have their own policies, the police chiefs are normally, I've not run across one where it's different than that, both in cities and school boards.
I think what you thought is that the school board is creating a policy that is giving the agency head or the police chief the ability to write procedures for the police department. So, so that you, not everything in the, in the police department will be, be policy. Kind of like the written directives that, because even if you want to go back to the sheriff, I mean, those are, I can't remember if they're policies or written directives.
Well, I just, essentially because we, we talk about the procedures manual, and I'm just trying to think, get my, this is a police department and you say you should have policies and procedures, but we never really give the police department any ability to write policy. We're, we're talking about procedures, this, the school board police department procedures manual. Isn't that the, isn't, shouldn't that be the written directives? Isn't that?
They have to follow the policies that you have placed in this policy, the sections, and that's the umbrella that gives them direction. And then within that framework, they create procedures. I mean, unless, this is what they're doing in Orange County, and the police chief over there said the only concern he had was he had to bring back all of the inter-agency agreements to the school board for approval. And there were a lot of changes in leadership of the various agencies that were, had jurisdiction in Orange County, but since we only have one sheriff's department, it shouldn't be an issue for Citrus County.
Put a takeaway, Mr. Dodd, what I would do, I mean, if you, if y'all want to move forward with this, I would provide a better explanation. I'll call you and provide, because I'll, I'll research it for you.
Which all of us too, because I'm concerned that Douglas stated there are only policies here.
That's fine. I'll make some phone calls, but then I'll explain it and I'll.
Okay, and then, like, what is the timeframe? Like, when will the framework and standards, when will that all be done? I mean, because we don't really, we're creating a policy that allows the formation of these standards, but yet, when, when will, when will this written directive, I mean, this is a huge undertaking, right? I mean, as far as having all these directives in place.
It is, but, you know, we would work on the directives that we need to have in place, such as a use of force policy, which in talking to FDE, there's really only a couple that they want to see in place. And then we can build our policies as we need to as we grow. I mean, with what we're doing right now, we don't need, you know, near, very limited policies. I've already kind of cannibalized some from the sheriff's office, they're an accredited agency. I want to make sure some of the training that I know happens here locally will be consistent with this area and this region. So I did pull, you know, some, I've got some drafts of a couple policies, you know, making sure you renew your firearms in your high liability subject areas, your use of force, you know, those are just a couple that we need right now.
Right, so like a records management system, we don't really have to worry about.
Don't worry about any of that.
Evidence, evidence, or all those things, right? Those aren't gonna be in this directive system that you're gonna develop.
No, because we're just not there yet. I'm not gonna create policies for something that just doesn't exist yet. So it'll be very limited in scope based on the size of the agency now, and then if the, this board decides at some point to expand the responsibilities of the agency, the police department, then we'll grow the policies out appropriately at that time.
All right. So then on page two, I had a question on the, it says Citrus County School Board Police Services. The Citrus County School Board Police Services, and assistant to the board and to the Citrus County School Community. Where, how far do we, is the Citrus County School Community? Because my definition is pretty broad as far as what the Citrus County School Community is, but what, what is the definition of Citrus County School Community?
Well, I think however we define the community, you know, the students, the staff, the people that are on our campuses for a variety of reasons, the authority of the agency, the police department, is restricted to obviously school board property. Or, you know, when you read the statute, and Wes might be, have a better explanation, it talks about having arrest powers on or off such property, which violate any law on such property, meaning somebody commits a crime on school property, you might be able to go effect an arrest back at their house. But your school community really is gonna be related to all potential victims or witnesses or people that you're serving while they're on school property, whoever that may be, as they come onto school property, whether they're visitors of a football game, whether they are, you know, there for summer camp, they would be potentially part of that school community.
The jurisdiction's gonna lie on school board property.
Yeah, okay.
And so whatever happens has to school, occur on school board property. But if, if, if somebody hits someone at the football game and gets in the car and drives off of the property, we're gonna make the arrest off property because the event occurred on the property.
But it limits you, like, in front of Citrus High, you can't go out and enforce a school zone because that's not school property.
And so if you were, if you were witness of a fight occurring across the street from a school, school board, police don't have jurisdiction, but as law enforcement officers, wouldn't they be able to?
Not, not for a misdemeanor. It's just like a sheriff's office that runs across the Denellin sometimes, you know, because they're working the north end and Subway had half price sandwiches, so they'd be up there and if they saw something happen in that parking lot, they'd call Denellin Police Department because they don't have authority across that line, and the same goes for the district.
So when we say or about property, I mean, I, because really, I thought it's gonna be, if it occurs on the property, but I know in several places, we, like in A, it says preventing intent of crime and enforcing the laws, the authorities violations occur on or about property. Why don't we just say on property owned? So I, and there's a couple other places that says on or about, and, and Mr. Bradshaw, I didn't know if that was just a legal term.
I'm gonna get Bradshaw's question.
If that.
Didn't you say on property?
And then on E, I think, wouldn't E, shouldn't E say investigating crimes and other alleged violations of law originating on school board property? Because don't they have to originate on school board property? Like, if someone were to come to the school with a complaint of a domestic violence or something that occurred, or child abuse that occurred off school board property?
But we take children off school board property for events and they're still subject to.
Well, that's another question.
regulations, so if they're at Bicentennial Park at a swim meet and something happens, that's a school function, still a school function.
I think it's only when they're on the bus, though, right, that they would be?
I would say that on the bus. We could not send an officer to Orange County on a field trip to, or to Mosey in Tampa while something occurred inside Mosey. I don't believe they have jurisdiction.
Okay, so not, not off school events?
It's very much like when the officers go on a safety patrol trip to DC. They, they go, they have no authority there. They have no authority to make an arrest, to intervene, they would have to call local. In-state, you know, sheriff's offices have a compact where they have mutual, a statewide mutual aid agreement that allows sheriffs even out of county to sometimes take additional action, but we don't have, have that.
And I have a question about terminology too. We have guardians, we're calling them guardians in our school right now, and I'm going back to when Sergeant Frimer came in and we were discussing the guardian program and it was nothing, then we started this police department. Are our guardians technically your police officers?
No.
No, no, no.
No.
They're not a police officer.
So we only have one chief of police and they are guardians, and our guardians still don't have any arrest powers, right? Okay, just checking because.
That'll all be covered in the next policy.
Although I thought that they were maybe trying to change something up with the legislature.
Well, there's, there was some, I asked Chief Tuck to look at that because the way that was being reported was not as, uh, Chief, I'll let you say it. Because it did imply like they were gonna have some arresting powers and then it made it look like it was gonna be just for charters.
No, it looks like it's, they're just talking about a school safety officer in the context of it being a sworn school safety officer. I think the summarization of that was poorly worded, but the statute itself is more explanatory and it does not give those, it does not push those arrest powers onto a guardian.
Otherwise, you'd be a police officer.
Correct. So on, so then on H, if we look at H on page two, so we're dealing with traffic laws, so obviously if a traffic violation occurs on.
School property.
It says or about, which again is a little bit confusing.
We'll, we'll take that out.
Okay. That are under the guidance supervision regulation patrol of the board. So, but if a school bus is involved in a crash, okay, you know.
Off school property.
Off school property.
That has to be people by the HP or sheriff's office.
So that, I mean, we could, I guess, send an officer to a school bus crash, no, but they wouldn't have any authority.
Wouldn't have authority to do anything.
But they could deal with issues of the bus, because the bus is under our, this property that we own and.
If two kids get on, get into a fight on the bus and the bus crashes, then my suggestion is just let.
FHP.
Whoever it is handle it, you know, but probably technically that, probably one of our officers could go and, and the fight gets on the bus, if I'm not correct.
I, I don't, I don't know. That'd have to be something to look into because I'm not sure that jurisdiction can be a woven jurisdiction, meaning wherever, as long as you're on that bus, no matter where that bus is in the county or the state, you have jurisdiction on that bus to.
I'll, I'll look at that.
React to a criminal response. I think that that's probably not, not something that goes with you.
And maybe the property is.
But the question is shift.
The real problem.
But the question is shift.
Well, I mean, we talked about that with guardians as well. I mean, you know, you have an entire class that's, you know, goes off campus to do some kind of event like, like our charter school does, and our guardian goes with them, but yet as soon as he steps off that campus, even though he's still filling his role as a guardian, he has absolutely no guardian authority. He can't even carry his firearm with that school off of that charter school property. So, yeah, it, exactly.
But isn't it ironic because if they are a licensed security guard, they could do that? Which is, to me, where the, the flaw in the law is.
That's the statute.
No, I, no, I realize that. It's, it's not us, it's the statute. But, but, but then we go back to, we've learned in this board that the responsibility, our responsibility does not end with that student's safe and well-being at the school, at the school property line. When that bus is being transported around, when they stop at a bus stop, we, our policies follow with that. So, I mean, there, there becomes a, a challenge that I think, I think that this legislature either needs to be, you know, defining some of that for us, otherwise.
I agree.
The, quite, the concern I'm gonna have is that they're gonna say, oh, well, you were on a bus, or you were at a bus stop and therefore, school board, you should have been doing something about that. And right now, we wouldn't have any authority to do that.
They're not responsible for bus stops.
It's expected.
But it's expected. It, I agree with you from a legal perspective, but I don't have to convince you right now with the Parkland investigation, the grand jury, we don't know what they're deciding when it comes to some of those things. And so, I mean, they're, you know, we just, I think, have to understand.
Case law is that we are on bus stops.
It was based on the, the jury, I mean, and other Supreme Court decisions.
And administrator.
Yeah. I agree with you, though. This isn't, because, Mr. Bradshaw, I'm grateful that we have you.
No, I, I understand.
It's, it's, it does feel to be for school boards a moving target.
Yes, and also, a lot of this stuff needs to be tweaked, you know, there's a, you write it down and then you figure out what the little problems are, hopefully they can fix.
And, you know, we're, we're in this board, Senate Bill 7040, which a lot of, some of these tweaks for this session are, are working their way into, is, it looks like it's gonna be a train bill. That's gonna be the train bill for this year. So don't just look, you know, because this is gonna be one of those things where there's gonna be a lot of good stuff added into this that we need, and there'll be some other stuff.
And then how could we not sign the bill for all the good stuff?
Well, that's, it does put the legislators in that position.
Oh, just say no, it'll all good. And in any of this, we just went over, listen, with the Z, let's say the sheriff's department said, I don't like your Z, I want some input on that. Can they have inputs?
No. No, ma'am.
Thank you.
They may make a suggestion, so they have no authority.
And we may or may not listen.
The same way that we can't tell the sheriff that we don't like.
Further discussion? Okay, I'll move on to 3.403. This is the school guardian policy. And this one you've already workshopped once. The modifications from the October 22nd workshop, I'll just run through those. And Mr. Dodd had coordinated with me and we took the word safety out, where schools, instead of school safety guardians, just school guardian.
That's what the statute says, right?
Yes, and we added that the, in section 2A, that the guardian will be assigned to the Academy of Environmental Science that can change each year. So we put the language that it can change each year in under section.
That's because they get permission. They can either request, they can either request a guardian or a school resource officer if they get the permission.
While we're on that, is because we have an SRO at every campus when it says that an armed person shall be assigned to each school campus, we're not talking just about guardians, as long as we've got the SRO there, we're still okay?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay.
Then under section D, general responsibilities, D3, added school guardians will serve to protect the schools through ongoing surveillance, the reporting of suspicious activity, and the tactical engagement of any active assailant. Section 5, school guardians have the authority to activate Alice protocols to secure a school and protect students and staff, and they shall be involved in all emergency drills on campus. Section 8, we added, including assigned protective vests while on active duty. And in section 9, portable radios will be assigned to each guardian to ensure immediate communications with school administrators, school resource officers, and first responders. School guardians will maintain radio communications and will be familiar with radio communication channels.
And those radios that we're issuing to guardians, are they one that still have the direct line to 911 like our SROs have?
So they have both the school district radio and they have the emergency radio, which has the direct channels to the sheriff's office deputies that are working that area.
Okay.
So they have both east and west, so the guardians that are on the east side of the county monitor that east channel, guardians that are on the west side of the county monitor that west side channel, so that if something happens, they're able to communicate directly to the responding officers to that school.
Who set that up originally?
I'm sorry?
I mean, is that, that's kind of similar protocol as to what the sheriff's office does?
So originally, you know, we have the radios in the schools, they can only talk to dispatch. And when the schools hit that emergency button or key up on that radio, the deputies that are on the road cannot hear that traffic. And so when we first started going down this path, the sheriff's office had suggested And so when we first started going down this path, the sheriff's office had suggested that we gave the guardians the same type of communication that they have on the buses and in the schools, the emergency radios. And, uh, quite honestly, I just did not feel that was acceptable. Uh, we had some dialogue, and at the end of that conversation, the guardians were given, uh, direct access to the radio system as it, uh, so they can talk directly to the officers.
And, and Mr. Dodd, you may know this better than any of us, at Parkland, isn't that communication piece then one of the biggest criticisms and things that could've been improved or should've been improved?
It still is a problem.
Is it? So is this going along that line?
Oh, yeah. We're much, we're way, way advanced from that and having a consolidated 911 center and a consolidated dispatch center is, is good. The guardian money, the guardian monies did pay for the radios. For the police, for the sheriffs, the EFC, uh, what do you call them, like the emergency radio or?
Yeah, the, the, well, yeah, the emergency radios that were issued to the guardians were funded through the guardian program and paid for their training as well.
And those radios, what, are 2,500 or how, how much were they?
They're about $5,000 a piece.
I've been, that's, yeah. That was a good thing, but just to have that immediate communications is very important.
That's encouraging. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
And then on section 16, we added the last, uh, part of the sentence there that says that the, uh, "The school guardians shall report all such incidents up to the school principal and to the Citrus County School Board Department Chief." And then on the last page, we added that last section number 20, "A school guardian may be requested to attend after-school events and graduations, and they may provide disaster relief as needed." I think they have to attend, or they could attend school events and graduations that are on school property, but I don't know about off school property. You know, whether that should be.
That'd have to be on.
Should be on school property.
Is that one of those tweaks though that should be?
They put in there.
What, with the legislature?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, if you can get them to do it.
No, but this, but, because it's, I mean, why wouldn't you wanna have the training?
I'm missing something.
I'm, I'm, it's, it seems like it, you would, I mean, if we're limited to our, our schools, I'm saying again that.
They only have authority on school property, period. Just stuff off school property, they have no authority.
I met with some of the legislators and asked them if they would expand the state laws to where they would be included for any school-sponsored activity.
How's that?
For them to be allowed their authority where they could.
Right. I mean, I didn't know if they, how was that received, you know?
Very well.
Okay.
I met with non-protected classes, and they're, they're gonna try to do something. All I know is that a lot of places have a big auditorium off campus, and they just do graduation after graduation after graduation.
Usually they hire the sheriff's office or special movies owners.
Do they? All right.
Chuck, and I don't know if you're changing the, the way you write the policies, but if we stay consistent, is there really a need to identify, this policy consists of the following sections? Is that kinda gonna be the way we're handling with all of our policies now?
Uh, with.
At the start of the policy, I mean, is that, or is that the way we're going or is that?
That's, some of them are, are like that. Yeah, they already are. I mean, it just depends on when they were written. We have a variety of different nomenclature, but this is, uh, the Roman numerals were just left off.
Please refer to the little writing at the beginning of the list.
Yeah. I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, I, I know, I, I was actually just playing some with the guardian policy. I'm sorry, the guardian, it's, the guardian policy is the one I was referring to. This is just the Roman, yeah, this is.
Yeah, this one's got Roman numerals on it.
Yeah.
And this came from.
Sorry, I was.
This came from your department, the guardian policy did.
The, uh.
The police, the police.
Pinellas County Sheriff's Office, guardian policy.
Right, but, I mean, can't we max the two together?
Well, they are, but the other ones, we're putting the Roman numerals in, this one's already got the Roman numerals in, so they should be alike when we.
I think she's talking, but aren't you like the little portion, the little portion right in the top of the guardians?
Oh, this is.
This is the policy consistent.
That's what I was asking about.
That, I'm, I'm just asking if that.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah. That's what I was just saying, is that, is that, if we're consistent, I, maybe we can do about the same way.
Yes.
Chuck, I have a question. Are you finished?
Yes.
I have a question. Uh, on the first page, under C, in the psychological exam, and I wanna know which psychological exam is given. But maybe Dr. Bead can answer that.
That's a psychological exam that's done by the sheriff's office.
But what's the name of it?
I don't know. I think, and I think statute's making it crystal clear this next session that basically it's the sheriff and only the sheriff that can even offer it anymore. I don't even think we can, we aren't even gonna be allowed to offer it as a secondary.
They're gonna do the same psychological exam that they do.
Yeah, and in the, in the revision in the statute, it doesn't say what psychological exam, it just says psychological exam. I'll be honest with you, I took mine many, many, many years ago, um, and I think they're taking the same one today. I, I don't know what it's called, I've never seen it written in statute or anywhere, it just says psychological exam. So I can't tell you what, which one it is.
I can think of the ones that I've studied, and you have some that, you know, take it over with, and you have some that take it, and you better be very careful how you answer it, because it's a serious exam. So I was wondering which this was.
Yeah, I remember it being like 500 questions and they ask you like 37 times whether you ever thought about killing your family, your mom, or your, you know, what your dreams are about, and it's just.
Wow.
Well, Dr. Hebert, would you point out for me what the name of that exam is, if your wife, if she knows? And that's not required for, uh, the police department, is that correct? The psychological exam is not.
No, yes, it is. We're all, we're all. That's the FDA, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
So were there any other questions about the guardian policy? So, do we wanna just go ahead and schedule it from, okay.
Y'all wanna schedule it for the, for the first, where you have to approve it for a public hearing?
Yeah.
All right, so we'll set the public hearing at the.
We're gonna get something in play because they're gonna change some of this and it'll have to get readapted in the fall, I'm sure anyway, so we might as well get it underway.
And clean up the pagination and bring it back to you to set the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
So, when, did you say you could schedule it one year in, today?
We'll put it on, on an agenda, a four-year agenda.
Okay.
Probably be in March, because there's 28 days in February and we have to.
There's 29 this year.
No, 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 you gotta put it on a regular agenda to be approved to go to advertise for the 28 days.
Right.
Because they can't vote on it.
So you could actually go to the next.
You go to the next, you go to the March meeting and then they approve it to be advertised.
Okay.
I did have a question, um, for.
Oh, I meant against the February, I apologize.
I have a question for the superintendent. Galaxy of stars, we recognize people, now we have these guardians, we have this district police department, guardians, is there, is there an avenue, are they included in an area if we wanted to recognize someone from the guardian?
Where could they get included in?
Like the support person.
Like a support person, or is that, are they already included?
Yes, we've had SROs nominated in the past.
Right, but, but the support is, like, we have, you know, the bus, the three, the bus garages, is this, would this be a department where a nominee can come from? Or is, is it already, is there already a way to have a nominee from a guardian?
Not, not in its own department, but for the boys.
Oh, you mean they, from the school?
From the school, like, I could nominate there.
But, yeah, we don't, that's just a town, public school.
No, 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 but, but they would be able, they would be part of support staffs. So someone, someone, as they're recommending somebody for support staff of the year could recommend, at Christopher High School, you could recommend for support person of the year, your guardian.
We did. Ron Frankluss nominated in 2007, and he was a support person of the year.
And, oh, is SROs considered support person?
Back then it was. I was teacher of the year and he was a support person of the year.
That probably needs to be clarified.
Yeah, might be. I wouldn't have, I would've thought.
It was a school that nominated him and, and voted for him.
But everybody knew he was there, I don't think the guardians.
But it could be just as simple as just next year sending a, a note out that guardian, you know, guardians and SROs are included in that.
And would they be included in the individual school, the millennial, or would they be, would they be a separate?
SRO and support staff.
Yes, I think they've been nominated for.
They've been nominated for support staff of the year. Because they.
It's just the statute or anything, and you cannot, you can nominate.
Well, no, actually, there is though. There are, there are rules that govern it with, with the state, I mean, with the foundation, because you have to meet, because they're gonna have to go through to the next levels. So it may be something that asks the foundation to look at. Guardians would, I think, be included, but SROs couldn't, they, because they're contrasted.
Those just are technical support staffs.
Yeah.
Why is it guardian?
That's what I was gonna say, where guardian would be.
We agree.
No, I don't think we have to, but they would have to go through the process, so as, as long as they went through their school's nominating process, if they made it on for their school, then it would go through the regular process. I'm talking about the guardians.
And I think Doug's point was, but we're not saying that Thomas Kennedy's a guardian at the school.
Sorry, I missed that.
Yeah. I, I just.
Okay. We're the office.
If I can just address, it's not called support person of the year, the state has changed it, it's school-related employee of the year. So I don't think it really, I think that encompasses a different group of people, so it just.
But it does bring up what Doug said then, since they're not really at a specific school.
I think, I think when Ron was, Ron was now a Christopher High School, I think he went on to be in the district. He was almost a support person, but, so that's what we called him back then.
Incorporated, go to district.
Somewhere in the district.
That'd be crazy.
Okay.
Well, the, the good thing is we have almost a year to figure it out. We're six months now.
All right, so we've done the two policies.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Wes.
And so we'll go back to state of the district. Are you doing state of the district?
I, I am, yes, I'm introducing. So in just a moment, Ms. Crowell's gonna come up and get, um, she has handouts for you all. I know we've emailed, um, the information to you and she's gonna put it up on the screen. But just to kinda share the, the process, um, our team is here to go through, um, our state of the district. Um, you know, we normally try and do this in September, but we kind of, it kinda got moved till now. Um, we're gonna go over the data that we have, um, so all the different data points that we have. Then we're gonna share kinda what is our plan, so our strategic initiatives that we have put into place, and we've been working on those this year, so we have a whole list of those. And then we have some progress monitoring, we're gonna share as far as how those initiatives are going. Um, and then at the end, we have an opportunity for questions. Certainly during the presentation, if you need particular clarification, we ask that you ask that, but understand some of the questions you may have about, well, how are you doing this or how are you addressing that, will be addressed throughout the PowerPoint because we've included that in our plan of attack. All right? So, Ms. Crowell.
And then just, so you know, we're, we're 11:20, so if, if you'll kinda watch the clock, so we, if, if we're through it, it's close to 12, then we can.
Yeah.
I don't wanna interrupt any savings.
No, no, you will do.
Thank you.
I never worry about you.
I do, you could do that.
I do like you, you're a great wife. As long as you got kids, somebody will help you. You know?
All right. Good morning.
Good morning.
Like Dr. Hebert said, we will be, um, doing it today, our state of the district, instead of like even the past and in September, October. Um, one positive about us doing it later in the year like this is that we do now have grad rate, where, you know, we just, of course, received that in January, so it is nice that we can incorporate that into one presentation, um, instead of separating it out like we've done in the past. So we start off just by reviewing, of course, our mission and our core objectives, um, on that first slide there. It just kinda brings us all back to the same page and why we're doing what we're doing. Looking at our demographics, we start, we look at this since 2015, 16, we look at our enrollment, our students with disabilities, our ELL, economically disadvantaged, and minority students, and we compare it to the state, is in that last column there, the state numbers. Notice there are two economically disadvantaged, and that is because one is from our survey two data, and then the second one, our survey three data, which we have not received confirmation yet, um, from, for the, the school year, that would go in the second. Notice that there is a difference, of course, because we're able to clean up some data after we get the report from survey two, and it's cleaned up by survey three. So that is why we did include that other, um, the other survey three data in there as well. And, and you can see that our, our total enrollment has definitely increased, as well as our students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged percentage, looks like that is going to increase again with survey three. Minority rate also increased. The only thing that we saw decrease in from 1819 was our ELL population. Our district grade comparison here is just from previous year to, um, the current, when I say current, I'm referring to the 2019 school year. So the 2017, 18 are the numbers to the left. The numbers from, on the right, and the bold, they're also bolded, are the 2019 components. So under ELA, you can see we did definitely increase in all of the ELA areas, from achievement to learning gains and our bottom quartile learning gains, where in math, we definitely saw a decrease. And you'll see that in a few minutes when we look at our strategic goals, um, and even in the subgroups, our, what our math trends are doing in achievement, in learning gains, and in the bottom quartile. Remembering that that math, um, those math scores are made up of our grades three through eighth grade math, and then it also includes our algebra EOC, our, and our geometry EOC. So that's what's included there. We saw definitely an increase in our science and social studies, um, which was great to see, our science being made up of our fifth and eighth grade science and biology, where our social studies is made up of our seventh grade civics and our US history, which is normally taken in that 11th grade year. Our grad rate, now remember, this is lagging data, so when you see this 84% for our grad rate, that was the previous year's grad rate. We already know that our upcoming year, we're going to see that 86 go in there instead. So we already know that that's gonna be a two-point increase. Our acceleration, we did see a decline in our acceleration success. Again, this is lagging for high school, um, so we are hoping to definitely see an increase there this coming up year. Our middle school did see a 1% increase. The bottom right kinda just reminds you of what percentages equal in A and higher, a B, a C, a D, and an F. We did overall increase our overall percentage points from a 56.7 to a 57.1, um, and that formula is the same coming up this year.
Ms. Crowell, um, on the math, is that changed at all? Is the reason that we're, we're, we're still not exactly where we wanna be, does it have anything to do with the middle school acceleration that we don't get credit for the way we used to? It used to be like a bank score, like, talking about your, your algebra one, your geometry, it used to get banged and then go into the cohort in high school. It no longer does, and so for all those students we're getting in middle school, the middle school gets the credit for that. Does that flush its way through these scores at all?
Well, I mean, they're getting, their algebra and geometry, they take that in the middle school, it's counting towards the middle school's mathematics scores, and then those students are not contributing to any math scores in the high school, if that's what you're referring to?
Right.
We're like.
So is that why we're down though, is what I'm trying to understand?
I don't know if I would attribute that to that, because when we compare to the state, and like counties, there isn't a decline. And their number of students taking the algebra and geometry in the middle schools are higher. So I don't know-
The state's average of doing it is higher than our district?
Yes.
Is that new? Because in the past, we used to be a trendsetter, I thought.
With our middle school, we're doing EOC, our, we have actually, the middle schools been more conservative compared to the state in students going into algebra or geometry in the middle school. Our county has been pretty conservative with not just looking at their seventh grade math score only to determine if they go into algebra. Most other counties and the state, when you look at the formula, they base that decision purely on what you got in seventh grade math. If you got a three or higher in seventh grade math, you were automatically put into algebra in eighth grade. No other factors. Citrus County does in the past, still does, looks at other factors as well, not just that one score. And, because what happens is with the formula for acceleration, those students that got a three or higher in that seventh grade math automatically are put in the denominator for acceleration for that middle school. So if we don't put them into algebra, of course, there's no way they're going to be in the numerator, but they will be in the denominator. So it's one of those where the state is basically saying, you need to put all these kids into your algebra if they got a three or higher, but, you know, it's a philosophy thing of, okay, but are they really ready? Is it going to create bigger gaps than, you know, in different math, so that when they get into the high school, then they're not as successful in the math if we were to force them into that algebra too early? So we do face some repercussions because of it, because we don't automatically just put them in due to that three or higher. We have, just this past year, they've increased the amount of students, though, that are in our algebra and geometry in our middle schools. And we're looking at, you know, the instruction and things like that, that we're doing in those middle schools. But if you compare, though, like your original question was, how are we compared to the rest of the state? You will see in a slide or two coming up that the state's math data is increasing, improving, where ours is going the opposite direction.
And may I add to that, because as you know, I just came back from my superintendent's meeting, and that is almost a non-negotiable for most districts now. If you score a high three and a four, you automatically go into pre-algebra or algebra in the seventh, geometry in the eighth. If you score four and fives, you automatically go to geometry in the eighth. If you score low threes, or a high three and a low four, you may be pre-algebra than algebra. And it's pretty much a non-negotiable. And some of those districts are very, there in Manatee County is a fine example. She just, they don't have any discussion about it. And if they find out they're putting kids in where they aren't supposed to be, there's another discussion. So I know that we're getting ready to have that discussion because it's, they're very successful what they do.
I think in the past, that was one of the questions we brought up, because we were having like 99, 100% pass rate.
Oh, we do have very high pass rate.
Which is a result of saying we're not necessarily putting in all those kids. I want to say we used to use the ORPS, ORPS Hanning? There was a tool that we used to screen out those students because it showed they were very successful.
I remember that assessment you're talking about. We used, I know, in fifth grade to see if they were going to the sixth grade math yet.
It was a predictor, because obviously we had 100% pass rate, but it also meant we limited the number of students in there, and that may now be impacting that philosophy.
Providing more of an opportunity for more students, right.
So which, which one of these areas is the one that you think we can, would have the most impact for us becoming an A district?
I would say definitely the acceleration and math. I mean, math, when I say math, math would be second, because we aren't devastatingly lower compared to other districts when you look at our math scores. It's acceleration that we are significantly lower than other districts, especially when you compare the other components. We're higher than them in ELA, we're equal to them maybe in math, but our acceleration is lower. And it is something, the thing with acceleration is that we have put in place, we have definitely put in place then things, you're going to hear that later on as well, that we put in place in our high schools especially, to track our acceleration better. When they enter ninth grade, you know, really being able to track who has met that acceleration point and who hasn't by the time that they're a senior, you know, is a big undertaking. And we have put that, some steps into putting that into place. Now, we're not going to see the benefits of that until, of course, the following year, because this is lagging data. And when we started, those kids were already seniors. So, you know, because I mean, honestly, it's really about scheduling. If, you know, once you enter ninth grade, it's about getting the opportunity to get into that numerator of, you know, for acceleration. If you've never been in an AP class, or an IB class, or an industry cert, or dual enrollment class, you're never then going to be in the numerator, even that opportunity, because you're not going to pass one of those courses or tests. So it's making sure that our students have those opportunities from ninth grade to 12, so that we can, of course, increase that numerator.
And you can only get that once-
Correct.
For the accelerated-
For high school.
For high school. What, middle school?
Middle school is a little tricky, because you could actually, because the industry certifications in middle school are lagging, but if you got it, if you got it due to an EOC, it is not lagging. So if I, so basically, if I took, if I'm an eighth grader, and I took algebra, and I also got an industry cert, that algebra score is going to count for that year's acceleration, but the following year, it's going to then count for that same school for an acceleration point again because of the industry cert.
Like, not if you had an industry cert and an industry cert?
Right, no, correct. You can't count twice in the same year.
And one of the things that I'm a little frustrated with, with the state, is that we are pushing industry certs at middle school levels, which are very hard for students to achieve those. And there is very little gain for that student, because you're kind of saying, okay, well, we got an industry certification while you're in seventh grade. So now if we're hiring you as an 18-year-old or 19-year-old, that's surely going to be very beneficial. It just doesn't really make sense. But I fully can understand it if we're talking about EOC and say, an algebra one.
Now, I was going to say that we did have, for the first time, one of our middle schools contributed with industry cert. And it was La Canto Middle, and you'll see it in our industry cert data with the Ag certification.
But if they did it in middle school, then they're not going to be able to get it-
They cannot take the same certification in high school.
So in reality, you'd be better to, if you were gaining it, you'd be better to try and push the algebra one over the industry certs in middle school.
Right, especially where you actually have, and the other piece is, a lot of times, your industry certification students in middle school are also going to be in algebra or in geometry as well. So they're going, correct.
Right, so we're only going to get them once, as opposed to if they did an algebra one, less focus on the industry cert in middle school.
Unless they did an industry cert and algebra both in the eighth grade. Then it would double for that school, because one year they would get the algebra, the following year that school would benefit. But seventh and eighth now, correct, it's all the scheduling of it.
You may have had the kid in seventh grade do the one, and the eighth grade do the other, and now it's enough.
Now they're washed, correct.
Now we go back to that scheduling.
Right. It's, yeah, it's definitely, I mean, it's a dance the schools have to do to make it most beneficial.
Because this is what we should be focused on.
Right. What's best for the child, exactly. So here you've got just all of our schools. You've got elementary on top, secondary on the bottom, and then, of course, our district data at the very bottom. These are our school grades, and it's just interesting to see all the way from 2006 to now. We did color code. The pink is just meaning a decrease in total points, and the blue meaning an increase in total points. Because a school could have remained a B, but their total points might have decreased still. Now they're a lower B, or they're a higher B. So we did want to just distinguish that. Those that are underlying did receive that A-plus money, that school recognition fund, because they either remained an A, or they increased at least a grade level from the previous year.
Question on this because of the potential bonus proposal that has been put out there.
Which one you have, the Best and Brightest one?
No, this is, the governor's new one to replace Best and Brightest, which is actually on today's committee for discussion. One, we sometimes have a differing understanding of a Title I school as it's defined for school grade purposes, like the governor's saying. Because receiving Title I dollars does not mean you are a Title I school, because it's, you have to be, I don't think we have many Title I schools. Is that correct?
Well, all of our elementary and, all of our middle and elementary are Title I.
All of them are defined as Title I schools.
Right.
Because I thought there, that when you receive like full free and reduced lunch and breakfast.
Would be for all students?
For all students. That was what defined you as a Title I school.
We must serve schools that are 75% and above for free and reduced lunch. They are automatically Title I schools. We have the option of serving high schools who are 50% and above. We must service 75% and above. We can service 35% and above. So our district serves middle school, elementary school, sermi, and will probably next year be adding pace.
But it, so by, by state and federal definitions, then each of those schools that are 75% and above, which would define all elementaries and middle?
Not all of them are above 75.
So then that's where, that's what I'm wondering when it comes to the bonus money. Because it's referring to that as 75%.
Of who are eligible?
Who's going to be eligible.
If you're talking about what's replacing Best and Brightest, this, though, is the school recognition.
But that's defined as a Title I school. And so my fear is, there's a lot of rhetoric saying, you're a Title I school, and then you would receive bonus money, or apply that you may, and it's twice as much money. And I don't think, because we, schools think that they're receiving Title I dollars, therefore they're a Title I school under that, is not the same thing, is what you're saying.
So you're saying that if we've got every elementary school designated as Title I, we want to make sure that the teachers in the schools that are under 75% free and reduced, they're not eligible for that money?
That's exactly right. Because I think at the end of the day-
What schools would that be?
I can get that. It's sitting on my desk. Off the top of my head, I would say three-fourths of our elementary schools are 75% and above.
So, and then of that, and this goes to my second part of my question, is with school grades and with the numbers that were being shown here, it's going to get even smaller as to what teachers would be eligible under the proposed plans.
Correct.
Because now you're going to shrink it even more.
And they don't have any more-
So I mean, so first, to make that first threshold, you're saying, we'll just round numbers, maybe a third of the schools wouldn't qualify.
Correct.
Now you drop down to the next stage, which is even more restricted. I guess where I'm trying to go that I think is important to understand with all these school grades and all the focus, is we can say, till we're blue in the face, that bonuses should not be given instead of wage increases. The legislature, we know, last week talked to us about that. There does not seem to be a stomach for that. They want bonuses. And we've been told in part because they just believe it should be as tied to accountability. And if we have to have a bonus, we need to have conversations about, is this really reflecting good teaching? Or is this just, I mean, because I know many of us can look there and say, well, we were in A, the number of points that we got to get an A are lower than what it was for a number of points to become a B district.
Here's my opinion. The governor has been very clear, because we asked, when D O we presented that to us, we asked him the other day, wouldn't he take the $300 million, throw it back into the $600 billion, and then give that to all districts for salaries? And it wasn't that they laughed, that they pretty well snickered that that's not going to happen, because he is adamant about that bonus money. Because I think, and here comes my opinion, I believe that they feel like Title I schools are your lower performing schools. So therefore, if we can get the better teachers to go to a Title I school, and if you offer those schools the bonus, your better teachers will want to go there. I truly believe that's their mindset. Because they talk about your better teachers should be with the lower ones.
And that's what Corrigan said to us, yeah. But in a community like ours, you're talking about just taking from one school and moving them to another school internally.
There's many districts you have schools by zip codes. That zip code has a good school design, code doesn't have-
We don't have that in Citrus.
We don't have that. We're not the founder of zip codes.
And the high schools wouldn't be eligible.
If they don't have any failure factors.
Right, exactly. I mean, I guess for something to be said, they all have DNF schools.
I know that was a roundabout, but it really has to do with the conversation of school grades, because school grades are becoming now the focus of bonuses. As opposed to as bad as it was under the original Best and Brightest with SAT ACT, it became about the teacher, as crazy and wrong as that was. Now we're just talking about things you cannot control. The teacher cannot control whether they're a Title I school or not. They cannot control what students are coming to that school. And I would agree, our schools are not defined by zip codes. So.
And how did that conversation go on, Thomas?
The same as the superintendent's. Okay, so, we have time, sorry.
We're finished?
All right. So what we have here is our strategic plan. If you remember, we, when the state developed their five-year strategic plan, we emulated it ourselves at Citrus County, where we took five goals and made similar goals based off the state's goal. So the first goal that we had as a five-year plan was the high student achievement in all subject areas. We wanted to increase student achievement. We wanted to also increase our learning gains in ELA and in math for all students in the bottom quartile. We want to look at the subgroups and close those achievement gaps. We want a higher graduation rate, and to increase acceleration participation and achievement. And when we're talking about all subject areas, of course, we're talking about ELA, math, science, and social studies. And the subgroups that we are targeting in Citrus County, we're saying African-American and Hispanic, students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged, and our ELL students. So these are our five goals. And like we said, we did base our goals on the state's five-year plan. We are now in the school year of our target. Okay, so in the, so as you can see, our first goal of student achievement was to increase the percent of students achieving grade level or above grade level, which is meaning a level three or higher, by six percentage points in each subject area by 2020. So the black bar is our target. We have not, of course, reached that yet. So in ELA, you can see that we started five years ago, our baseline was at 57%. We did go down a little bit. However, we have gone up. Then you can see in mathematics, in science, and in social studies. So in ELA, you can see we did go up one percentage, but we are still trying to reach that 63% is our goal. In math, you can see we slightly went down. Science, we did go up. Social studies, we've actually surpassed our goal, which is wonderful. We reached our goal last year, and this year, with that 76%, we went past our 72% target. In that bottom-left corner is the state's data. So it's more for a comparison. And that's what I was talking about before. When you look at their math, how they have steadily, you know, gone up, you see that 56, then that 57, then into 60, versus what their goal was. In science and in social studies as well, kind of similar to, similar to ours. However, we did, our social studies score is higher than the state and our, and our science as well. Okay. Then, our second goal is regarding just learning gains only. So in ELA, we have increased there from a 52 to a 53, with our goal being a 59%. Because our goal was to, from the baseline, to increase by seven percentage points to meet that state target in each of the areas. So we did increase from the previous year, but we still have some more points to go to reach that target. And then in math, you can see how that is going in the wrong direction. And that's what we were talking about before, is, okay, what are we doing? What can we do? What must we do in our mathematics instruction so that that is not the B T D trend? So there you have, on the left, you've got your ELA and your math. And then the second group of the cluster is your ELA learning gains in the bottom quartile. Where there, we are only one percentage point from meeting our goal of that 45%. Where the bottom quartile in our mathematics, again, that 41%, we want to get back up to where we were going in the right direction, going at 51%. Our goal number three has to do with the achievement gap. We want to reduce the percent of the gap in student achievement by one-third in each of the categories. So we first start looking at just our African-American students compared to our white students. It's very important to note the number that is in the parentheses in that top left, so that you have an idea of how many students are we talking about. Now, remember, you see that, you see 344. That just means that we have 344 African-American students that contributed to this data, meaning they tested. So that would be, in ELA, your third through 10th graders, okay, for achievement. And then, of course, in math, your third through eighth. And then if they took algebra or geometry, in your science, it's your biology, fifth and eighth graders. And then, of course, in social studies, it's your civics and US history. So that's what those, that number is signifying. So, and notice also, the bar all the way to the right has red on top, green on the bottom, meaning we want smaller bars here. Okay? So the higher the bar, not as good. Okay? Because we want to decrease the achievement gap between, in this one, our African-American and white students. So in ELA, we have decreased the achievement gap from 24 points to 22 points. However, our goal is to be at 15. In math, again, you see that trend of, we did increase our gap there. Instead of it going down, we are now at 27. Our goal is to be at 16. In science, we did increase the gap there a little bit to 29, where our goal is 20. However, please note, though, in science, with that 29, we are still lower, or we have a better achievement gap than the state does at 32. And also, in social studies, we surpassed our goal with 16, which is wonderful. And again, that's way lower than the state average of 24. In math, where we did go up to 27, we still do have a smaller gap, though, than the state's average of 29. And same thing with our ELA, it is lower. So in every subject area, we do have a smaller gap than the state when comparing African-Americans to white students. We did the same with our Hispanic- We did the same with our Hispanic. I will, please note here, in ELA and math, when we did our baseline data in 2014, 15, we only had a 1% gap in ELA at that time, and a 0% gap in math. So it really does, you know, when you set a goal from a 1 or a 0, it is kind of hard to maintain that, especially in 0 to a 0. So you can see there that that is, that we did increase, of course, in math and in ELA, we remained at that 7. Still, both of those numbers are smaller gaps than the state average in both of those. Once we, of course, finish this year, we will then be creating a new five-year plan with a new goal, of course, emulating the state. So the state is still making their goals coming up for the following year, once the 2020 scores come in, and we will, of course, then have a different goal than that 1 or that 0, obviously, based on a new baseline. And in science, we definitely decreased the gap, and in social studies, we decreased the gap when we had our Hispanic students versus our white students.
How is the state, Florida, compared to other states?
Well, it's different assessments. This is all just regarding our FSA assessments, and, you know, I mean, so these are all Florida-based assessments only. The only times that we can really compare.
Be careful what you wish for.
I mean, when you look at your ACT and SATs, that's gonna be a little different. Okay, economically disadvantaged, here, you actually see that the number of students that were economically disadvantaged versus non, our economically disadvantaged is actually the majority compared to our non, when you look at our data there. So our non-economically disadvantaged is more the minority in this piece. However, when we do compare the two, there was an 18-point difference, which is better than the previous year with 19, so we are going towards our goal there of 13, and that is significantly lower than the ELA for the state. In math, again, we are significantly lower than the state with only 15-point gap, and it just remained the same compared to the previous year. In science, we've remained 17, and in social studies, we did increase up to 16, but we are trying to get back down to that 11 goal by the end of this year. Definitely more successful with our economically disadvantaged students. Our students with disabilities, okay, is the next one there. In ELA, we did decrease from 43 to 42% gap, going towards that goal of 29. I mean, it's still a big, there is a big gap there from 42 to 29, but it did go in the right direction. And math, also going in the right direction to 39 versus our 41 and 42 from the years before. In science and social studies, we did increase the gap slightly in science and somewhat more significantly in social studies. So again, looking at that and the why of why did that gap increase would, you know, lead to that kind of a discussion from analyzing this data, especially when you look at what the state did in those subject areas as well. The last one is our ELL students. Please note the very small amount, we're only talking 140 students that contributed to this, that were tested, were ELL students. So, you know, of course, when you have that smaller N, smaller number of students significantly change the data. So here, you've got in ELA, we did decrease significantly from 34 to 22. Again, if you look at that, the previous year, we were actually, we had a higher gap, a greater gap than the state, where this year, we have a smaller gap than the state, which is wonderful for one-year difference. In math, we still are above the state slightly with the gap. In science, we did go down below the state, which is nice there, again, from the previous year where we were above the state gap, now we are below it, which is good. And then finally, our social studies, we did go from 32 to 31. So again, we have, because our baseline was so high, at our baseline year of 1415, we've basically been reaching that goal all, you know, these past few years. But of course, that is going to change coming up the next, in the next year. Graduation rate is our goal number four, and our goal here was to increase the percent of students graduating, and this is talking about that standard diploma in four years, by 7.1 percentage points by 2020. So in 1718, we were at 84.1, we, our goal of 84.5, we were very close. This past year, we surpassed it with an 86%. And you have the state over there in the bottom-left, they also surpassed theirs at an 86.9. We did have a greater gain from 1718 to 1819 when compared to the state, but we are just still slightly nine-tenths lower than the state. But if we make the same kind of gain like we did last year compared to what the state gain was, I foresee us then surpassing the state graduation rate in the 2020 school year. This is something really to be proud of regarding our graduation rates, when you look at our students with disabilities, each bar, each color there is a different year, and this is what we always like to see, is that every year, that bar getting taller and taller, and that is signifying the percent of our students with disabilities who graduated within four years with a standard diploma. So in the district, you can see that 77.4% of our 115 students that are students with disabilities graduated within four years with a standard diploma. You can see each one of our three high schools also increased, LaCanto High making a significant improvement there. I believe they only had one student that did not, making theirs at 96.7. So we're definitely going in the right direction here with our students with disabilities. And again, with our economically disadvantaged, same thing. In fact, with our economically disadvantaged, we are higher than the state average. Where last year, the previous year, at 79.3, our district was below the state average, now we are above with an 83.7, where they only went up nine-tenths of a point by 82.9. And here you can see, we had around 603 of our graduates in that cohort that were economically disadvantaged, and of that 603, 83.7% of them graduated within four years with a standard diploma. So definitely moving in the right direction there, and something to be very proud of. Our last goal is the acceleration goal, and we kind of briefly talked about this already when we were talking about our school grade. Here just breaks down what our goal is for our middle school and our high school, and, you know, what direction are we going? The blue is representing the middle school, the orange is representing that high school. So our middle schools are increasing, like, they just increased last year by 1%, our goal still is to be up by 10% to 67. And our high school, like we said, we are seeing a decline there, and not going towards that goal of 60. But like we said before, because of the things, the initiatives that we have put in place last year and this year, we really aren't going to see it, because it is lacking data, until those students then become seniors and graduate. So we're really hoping that we're gonna see a gain there towards a goal.
Superintendent and Board, I wonder, though, if in the future, we should look at that, both the MS and the HS acceleration is breaking out by, you know, whether they're AP certification, where they're at, because it would help give us some indicators of, you know, are we trending in one area better than in another area? Is AP up, or dual enrollment up, AP down?
Well, I can tell you dual enrollment is our highest.
And I figured that, I mean, but maybe is cert up?
It's most successful.
Is cert up, cert down?
Gotcha.
That, you know, and especially with what you were saying about the middle school, that would allow us to also target in maybe to say, are we looking at the EOC, Algebra I should, you know, we wanna keep that increasing up? It's not nearly as important, it sounds like, if cert in middle school is going up, because the focus really.
Our focus is definitely still EOC.
But it would be good to see where we're trending on that, because it's saying we're down, but I don't know what that really means. I mean, and I don't mean that to be bad, I just mean, it could be that dual enrollment is way up and people are taking less AP, or they're dropping and going into, maybe they're not taking AP and they're taking honors. And so it would be good to know, okay, well, that's what we're doing, maybe we need to have conversations about that.
It would also be important to know, are we providing the opportunity? Are the students in AP classes and just not passing the test, or are they not even in the AP classes to begin with? So I mean, to me, that would be something important to know as administrator of the high school, to know, okay, are we doing a good job with scheduling and giving them the opportunities? Or is it that they are in there, but they're not passing it? So I mean, that would be another piece as well.
And you know, and some of you may know this, it looks like their, the state has proposed in bills to incentivize the dual enrollment on campus.
Correct.
And that's a bill that's being done, which I think all of us have been supportive of that, we just don't always have the teachers that have the certifications in order to do that on campus.
Right, so we would love more of that.
But that would certainly be an argument where we've struggled sometimes to say, well, okay, we're gonna offer AP instead of dual enrollment, because we can get a teacher to do the AP that may not qualify for the dual enrollment. If they're incentivizing it, maybe there's a way to incentivize that then for the teacher to say, do three credits and get certified so that we can now teach dual enrollment.
Because they will also say, you're AP and IB, the teacher gets money for every past test.
Right.
For dual enrollment, they do not. There is no test, it's just that they get a C or higher in the course, but there is no, like you said, incentive for the teacher, like there is, I mean, they get around $50 per test that is passed for AP and IB, which really can add up for, you know, when there's success there. So you're right, that dual enrollment doesn't have that major incentive for the teacher.
And as we know, it's still one of the most popular things.
Well, it's the most successful. There isn't a test involved, it's just getting a C or higher in the course.
Right.
So that's why I believe that it is more of a success when you look at the acceleration formula.
The state's motivation, and some of you, I think those of us in Tally, we're talking about this, the state's incentivization is, it's actually more affordable when it comes to, right, future funding for them to have students encourage them to take it at a dual enrollment level, than if they're having to take those later on at a college or university, traditional college or university. So they're, I mean, the state has a method to their madness on it, and that's okay, I think it's good for kids.
Now, I'll be honest, this is a good breaking point, because the next part, it goes into what are we doing now, our initiatives? So I mean, that might be a good spot to stop, that being that it is almost 12, so that when we come back, that we can go right into what are we doing now in initiatives, and then that progress monitoring, how are we monitoring our initiatives? Okay? All right. Let's go.
Mr. Bishop, they have it set upstairs, they go next to.
My understanding, it's supposed to be upstairs, that conference room.
It's upstairs. We're going where?
Upstairs. Here's the conference room, my understanding, yes.
Ms. Cap? How, Ms. Cap, how long is lunch? Don't we know when?
What's your pleasure, guys?
30 minutes.
30? You're in high school, huh? 35.